Good evening Hatfield, welcome to the, one of very few that we have now, the 6:00 PM, March 5th meeting of the selectmen here at Town Hall. We have a couple of agenda items that we're gonna be going through tonight. Gonna be looking at our warrant articles and our capital and operating budget issues. But this evening we have a guest from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Jim Mazick, and he's gonna be discussing with us the community development strategy. So without going any further, I'm just gonna ask, anybody has any public announcements?
Just a couple. We'll be talking about this further, but it'll be a public hearing on the community development strategy on the 19th of this month here at Town Hall. Encourage anyone interested to please attend. Also, there's a public hearing by the planning board concerning Hatfield zoning bylaw with regard to medium and large scale solar grounded mount systems. I'm sure that's of interest to a number of folks. Also, the Conservation Commission is holding a public hearing on March 7th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall to consider application under the Wetlands Protection Act filed by Mr. Ray Sitche for purpose of rebuilding a single-family house on his existing footprint. Anyway, that's here as well. That's it.
Great. We can, unless you, you wanna go through the minutes right now?
No.
Alright, let's get right into that. Okay, so anyways, I'd like to introduce Jim Mazick again from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we're gonna be talking about the community development strategy for hopefully getting some grant money for this town, so Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Can I just say a couple words to state that?
Well, actually what this is for is, is we're looking for some funding for the school across the street. We've been working on this for several years. We went through charter school proposals, we went through a few other things. Now we're kinda looking towards elderly housing along with possibly some low-income housing. So we've been dealing with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission over the past few months, and this is what we're coming up with, so hopefully, again, like I said, I'm hoping for the town and ourselves that we can get, get this thing rolling hopefully soon. So again, Jim?
Okay, and as you indicated, the town did submit a pre-application under the Mass CDBG Economic Development Fund a few months ago, and it was approved. The next step or next phase is this mission of a full applications for planning funds for center school as the chairman indicated. And it's really for a building and market assessment, condition billing, redevelopment costs and that sort, and a marketing for best type of use of the building, which could include housing, could be economic development business, or could be mixed-use, combination of the two. As this is an economic development fund application, you have to look at all opportunities, and depending upon the market identification, that would dictate, well, obviously your preference in terms of what their recommended, recommendations would be for the use of that building. The application deadline will be early April. The hearing, as also was indicated, will be, public hearing on the application will be in two weeks on the 19th, again during the evening. And one of the requirements for submitting under this program, as well as the community development fund, community development fund program for D H C D, is the development of a community development strategy. And the town had created a strategy back in 2009 for some other economic development funds they received, however, it's four years later, and that document needs to be looked at and revised. And there, there's a couple of elements which are required as part of this strategy. One, the intent of the document is provide an overview of all the town's major planning documents and studies. It has to identify goals or actions over the next five years. It has to prioritize what its projects are from that list of actions or goals. It has to address how the, the town's document is consistent with the Commonwealth Sustainable Development Principles, is 10 principles and ones you redevelop, example, redevelop first rather build new, so that's a perfect example, you're looking to potentially redevelop that building, build something new elsewhere. The, actually, the, whatever is being proposed in one's application, whether it be this economic development fund application, or if you were filing a C W B G, community development application, it must be addressed in your community development strategy. If it's not, then obviously, you're not too concerned about that funding request because it's not in your priority document. Again, the document, again, minor things, has a seven-page limit, and if you, if you're over 5,000 population, you have to have a target area, and you have to describe that target area and the rationale for it. Well, you're not, you're about 3,500 or so.
3,400.
3,400. So that's not, you know, the case. And again, the strategy has to be held at least one month prior to when you're filing the application. It'll be filed, I believe, that first week in April. It might be filed before that, but that's the deadline, the last, you know, that, so that's fine, but the deadline, I think, is April, might be April 5th actually. It's a rolling application, the pre-app was approved on a certain date, and it's 90 days from that date. I think April 5th is the deadline to get this in, which is not a problem at all. So essentially, that's the requirements, or the elements that's required for the strategy. In your document, which again, you prepared, again, as indicated in 2009, you do address in the first couple of pages, a number of documents that you've prepared over the years, your master plan, you're a part of a sub-regional housing plan a number of years ago, which we were involved with, you have an agricultural advisory commission, and there's a report that Jay generated, you have an economic development plan, that's about nine years old, and there's been some revisions and modifications on that, your preservation committee, your open space rec plan, and these are all included and summarized in this document. And I, I won't go through those, but if there's questions that folks you have, we can go through that, you know, shortly. There were some edits, revisions internally over the past few weeks that have come, you know, from the town, and then the document you have before you have been incorporated for your further review and discussion. You do include in your strategy, your future community development efforts for the next five years. You talk about economic development, working with the redevelopment authority, looking about changing, modifying your zoning bylaws for attract, to attract light in industry, talking agriculture-related businesses, and a number of things which are consistent with the documents I had mentioned previously, which are your other standalone documents. You, you talk about your, your goals relative to population and housing, again, zoning modification, providing a diversity to housing, which again was mentioned as the potential reuse for this, for the center school building. You discuss as a priority over the next one to five years, open space recreation, protection of historic character, you know, agriculture, farmland, and then land use and growth management. Your document then goes on and talks about all these things, your previous documents, as well as the, the goals you have set for the next one to five years are all consistent in the R, and I won't go through it with the Commonwealth 10 Sustainable Development Principles. And, and then you have finally your prioritization of projects. And these I will read specifically. And these are basically called from the previous goals and the previous studies over the past probably 10 years. And there's probably seven or eight priority projects. The first, and these are not in any specific order, develop a town-wide infrastructure and capital improvement plan, identify compatible reuse strategies for the center school building, including commercial, housing, and/or mixed-use development, continue to review and modify municipal and zoning bylaws to support local businesses and promote light industrial technology expansion, support and attract agricultural-related businesses, promote a diversity of housing opportunities, maintain the rural and agricultural look and feel of Hatfield. Another priority is achieve business development that continues to town life through compatible business infill development in the town center, and targeted site-specific light industrial technology expansion. And again, that may or may not be something as a result of the center school redevelopment. Another one is work with Hatfield Redevelopment Authority to implement the town's economic development plan, protect prime farmland through our reach to farmland owners on land protection strategies and opportunities. And finally, all the above activities initiatives will be addressed in a manner that will mitigate the evolving needs of the community, as well as the potential negative effects on the rural, historic, and agricultural nature. So that is your strategy, again, as originally developed in 2009, and has been more recently modified as of 2013. So as a board, and as part of this application process, which will be discussed in two weeks, then this document needs to be discussed, which is being done tonight, and then to be refined further should you feel it need to be, and then accepted, certified, and then submitted to the application, which will be in the forthcoming weeks.
Anybody have any questions?
I thought we had added one more prioritization of the projects, and that is the one you suggested, and I didn't hear you.
That would be the second bullet, if you have the red, or you have blue.
Blue.
Identify compatible reuse strategies for the center school building, including commercial, housing, and/or mixed-use development. That should be the second bullet under prioritization of projects.
Yeah, we have an older.
Okay.
Which was probably the most important one to say in your priorities for what we're trying to get. Well, as Mr. Mazick indicated, this is not a cold start, this is an update from one previously developed in 2009. We have tried to update it with, in relationship to things that are ongoing with our master plan, and some other studies that have been completed. The completed study for the technology feasibility of a business, a technology park, we updated with information concerning the town center and town center business study that was done here, we had some help with UMass landscaping folks, been updated with some of the open space work. We did do identification of views and scenes and historic areas of the town, and those have been documented and cataloged, cataloged in a plan. And all that's been captured, I've submitted my comments, and they're all in here. I don't know if anyone else had anything else.
I just, none of the prioritization of projects, what were you saying though?
Okay, well, there's a, there's a, under, could you, Jim, could you read that?
Yeah, I'm looking to see if I have another.
And that's, we've identified, one of our priorities is the center school.
Right.
Right, but we have left that out.
It was, it, yeah, it was generally identified, because it talked about bringing infill development into the town center area, developing housing opportunities, which could be a byproduct, and economic development priority, but specifically that building, which now you've identified, been working on for a number of years, was not so felt appropriate, that be listed as a priority project, calling off from those other ones. And it does specifically state in here, and again, there's no order, but under prioritization of projects, identify compatible reuse strategies for the center school building, including commercial, housing, and/or mixed-use development. And that really is the focus of what we'll talk about in two weeks, the application, which will always be on the table.
Jim, we've had this for a couple of weeks ourselves, and I know I've provided input, and I don't know if others have, but everyone's had an opportunity to go through this.
Then on the 19th, we have our public hearing on this year.
Yes, for the.
With the public.
Yes, for the application, that will, while a few vote on it, which will be submitted, subject to your vote.
Looks like you've got everything in here, Jim.
All right. You wanna accept this as is?
I wanna accept Jim's version, because.
Well, absolutely, yeah, right, the red version.
We'll, you'll get a corrected copy, we'll finalize copy for future signature, but please, if you approve it tonight, then you'll have it to sign at a later date.
I would move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the town of Hatfield Community Development Strategy as revised on 5 March 2013.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Jim, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
And I will, you know, I don't put the pressure on, but both for the public hearing and the, which will be in two weeks, and then the, tonight's meeting, the minutes, even if they're in draft form, not approved, but I can stamp draft, but they, those need to be included in the application.
I need this also.
Okay, so I will get all of that to you tomorrow.
What will you need for, after our public hearing, Jim?
It'll be, this, well, I have the signing sheet, but the minutes, and even if they're draft.
Okay, that's of the public meetings?
Yes, and, and of tonight too, we'll need the minutes, even if they're draft.
All right, well, these should be all taken care, these should be all set, okay.
Well, yeah, because you, the application, it won't, when, when will the application actually go out, right after?
The application will go, subject to your approval, I'll have some other paper that needs to be signed, and that'll be one of the votes you'll have to act on. And then basically, I need to upload everything. I've got, I've got things already done, I'll finalize it, it's not gonna be a lot, it's not as intensive of the other, the other applications that, under the C W B G side. I will, once you approve it, get all those final signatures on things, get the minutes, just about uploading everything finally, it's all online, it's hard copy, but it's all gonna be uploaded and then pushed off to D H C D. So I think April 5th is a drop dead, but realistically, sometime probably the fall week of the, you know, between the 19th and 26th probably will be when, once I get, I get everything, then I can go.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, Jim.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, I'll go back to the minutes of.
Board of Selectmen, 19th February, subject to, and the public announcements, first section, building inspectors, it should read CBA.
Right.
Rest of it was okay.
Motion's been made, I'll second. Mr. Lechko was not in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, posted business, we have warrant articles.
I was hoping Paul would be here, but unfortunately, he's not, not available.
Would you like to hold off on these?
No, no, let's, we can press ahead and do a couple of things. Sure you've all been through this again. Again, we need to do finishing a number of these, sequencing, those kinds of things, but on Article 5A, Ed had suggestion about possibly looking at CPA tax, revisiting that, we need, we need CPA to at least give them an opportunity to speak to that, and.
On Article 5A?
5A. 5A.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, there's two 5As. That's why. I was gonna say.
There's two 5As here, okay.
I didn't remember, and there won't be any 5As.
I'm looking at medical pot here.
What have they got to do?
But in action for Paul, we need, we need to invite Bob Wagner here, and/or his representative, so we can have a brief conversation on this, and give him an opportunity to talk to what CPA's been doing, and how much money we've been getting back from the state match, in terms of match.
Right, and, and the thing that we don't know is how much is gonna be coming back this year. That's why, you know, I think, let the voters decide if they wanna keep it at the 4%.
It's 3%.
This is in regards to additional taxes, when your real estate bill comes in, this is the 4% that goes to CPA funding.
3%.
3%? I thought it was 4 on there.
3%'s the max.
Okay, I thought it was 4, I'm sorry. And reduce that down to either 1 or half or whatever, just for a couple of years to get, get a little bit of balance here, and give the people a break on their tax, you know, so there's not so much going on.
No, it's an open issue, we'll have an opportunity to talk to CPA. Medical pot, Board of Health was gonna have some discussion about.
We have our Board, I thought it was this week, it's next week on Board of Health.
Okay, so that's still an open one?
That's still an open one, yep.
Planning Board, still looking for some information from them, apparently, maps on the mixed-use development. Solar bylaw, we just announced that they're having their public hearing on finely crafted solar bylaw, so be able to nail that one down. Jump down to 10A. That is, in fact, and Tom, Town Council has confirmed adoption of Massachusetts General Law 43, Section D, is a town meeting acceptance, he's confirmed that. So Paul needs to put that one back in, okay? He had stricken it, we thought perhaps Board of Selectmen could simply adopt that, but requires town meeting initial acceptance. And then on Article 12, I thought we were going to address in Phase 2, and this, we're talking about the Town Hall renovation, HVAC. And I don't see, if we're gonna enumerate all these bits and pieces, the elevator, this sidewalk, sprinkler, et cetera, why, why we wouldn't, then it's well, enumerate HVAC improvements as well.
I thought that was in there.
Yeah, well, it's not.
Jeff, I got a question in regards to the Town Hall, all right? I know, before I left on vacation, we talked about, and we've been talking right along, about the original plan that we did for the building, try to keep it consistent with that, so in the future, if we ever put a second floor on, we wouldn't be disturbing like a big meeting room. And, and when I came back, the whole thing was all changed around, and now, if we go anything on the second floor, you're gonna be tearing out everything that we did this time to put a second floor in there in, in the future. I just totally don't understand how it got changed all around, and why we're heading in a different direction, but.
That shouldn't have gotten changed.
What's that?
That shouldn't have gotten changed, because we brought it up.
I, I just, it totally blew my mind when Paul said.
I mean, you're gonna have to make changes down here.
But if we didn't have to touch the meeting room at all, that, that meeting room would be there, because it didn't affect anything on a second floor. But then, all of a sudden, when things got changed around, now if you go to put a second floor, and you're gonna be destroying a lot of stuff here, so it's, it's, I hate to see wasted money.
I do too, but I, I was on the assumption that that, whatever framing they were gonna do for ceilings would be, also be used for, be strong enough to hold a second floor. And that's what I was told, a few times.
Well, see, the way it's set up, okay, the way it's set up, I mean, you guys weren't part of that, the building part, and I, I and Phil and everybody was, the second floor is considered a floating second floor, which means that it's a second floor put within this building, because if you attach it to the walls, then you have to do a substantial amount of work on the footings and stuff like that, so it does not, the way it was designed for that second floor, it was designed to be within this building, so there's nothing that structural weight being put on the outside walls of this building. And that was the reason for putting the I-beams down through in various locations, and then putting footings down here, and running it right to the second floor. With the way that's being set up, it's, it's really got, there's a little bit of stuff that's happening that.
So you're saying we gotta still, what you're, what you're, what you're saying is, we should be doing the work down here too?
No, what I'm saying is, when we planned, like, for the meeting room, okay, there was nothing above the meeting room, so that would not even be touched. But the way it's being designed right now, you put a second floor, and you're gonna be tearing out every, in every office, you're gonna be tearing stuff out and opening it up to put these I-beams down in, to make it, to make the structural portion of the second floor. That's what I'm saying. And I know Jeff's comment originally was.
I, I, I was the strong proponent for trying to carve out something consistent with the overall plan, so we don't get back into planning and replanning and replanning.
Then when I came back, I was, I was like, what happened here?
At this point, however, after, not even a discussion about it, essentially, the overall plan got rejected. Quite frankly, I think we'll be lucky to do, we've got the Phase 1 out now, it's not consistent with the other, the master plan, but we have all this other work to do in Phase 2, which is far de-scope from the original 5.1 million down to maybe 800,000, and in a hunk of that, we can take care of with free cash. I honestly don't think in foreseeable future is gonna be any real impetus to put in that second floor. I just don't see it, I, I see the prospects are about nil.
Personally, I don't either, but, I mean.
So, so the, so the aim here is to get as much as we think we can for the good of the town and the community for the, for the years ahead, with, with the dollars available.
The other thing I saw is, like, the assessor's office was cut way back down, and it's almost made into two offices just about, and I was surprised that we, we would do that, because it's all a complete office. I mean, there's people that, you could put two or three people in that office to make it work. So, you know, when I saw that, there was a lot of things that I saw, it's like, what's, what's going on? Did anybody think of these things?
Well, he was working.
It's just a bunch of series of little offices.
Supposedly, they were working with.
All the offices.
All the office people. I know there was one complaint from the office up front, and I told Paul, and I told, I told Paul, and I told the people up in the front office to get together, along with the architect designing it, to sit down amongst the group of them, and figure out exactly what they need, and as far as I know, they've done that, and.
Okay.
They made an office space a little bit bigger to support a safe, I believe, and some other file cabinets, that originally, they didn't think they were, they were gonna make it.
For Town Treasurer, and, yeah.
It just, I, I mean, it's just the way it was carved out, I mean, we've got storage there at the end of the, at the end of the assessor's office now, and then we're, we're taking that out, but putting the same thing down, and a couple offices down further into the meeting room.
There was a reason for that, I can't tell you what it was, because I was talking to Paul about it, as to why we were doing that. He, I think, I think it was to make more room for another office, basically, so they were trying to push one down a little bit. Actually, it was for the office we're talking about. That's what it is.
It's just that I hate to see things torn out.
Because.
And then, you know, it, it's like a waste of money to me, and, and it's my tax dollar, just as much as everybody else's, and when that kind of stuff happens, I, I mean, you know, I'm just tired of the way architects work, and.
We're, we're trying to keep the cause down, but yet, it's either, you know, you, you either go with a full project, or you try to make do with what you got, and.
I know.
Make.
From a, from a simple.
Oh, yeah, but that's the way it is, I mean, you know.
Meeting room and, and three offices or four offices now, it's a whole project.
You know, 30 years ago, you had it done.
Yeah.
The offices would have been put up, no questions asked. Nowadays, if you don't go through the proper channels, everybody's knocking on your door. I mean, that's, that's the sad part about it.
But there's, there's something to be said here, that instead of letting the architects tell us what they want, let us tell them what we want.
Pretty much, that's, supposedly, that's what, I mean, not us, directly, but we had Paul working with everybody in the offices, along with the architect, you know, because they're the ones that are gonna be spending all their time here, not, I mean, we come in here maybe a couple of times a week, if that, but.
I guess, I don't know, did you guys take a look at, you guys must have seen the latest plan? I, I mean, from something that was simple, went to something, all of a sudden, a bunch of offices now. I mean, there's probably five or six offices versus three offices in a meeting room, like originally planned, so.
Well, I think there's a, there's a handicap bathroom up there.
Handicap bathroom, there's a. Handicap bathroom, there's a office floor, Town Treasurer, there's a meeting room. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing elaborate, it's pretty bare bones.
I know.
Straight build out into the gym.
It's just a shame that it's wiping out all the architectural design and the oak woodwork and all that other stuff, so, all right, that's all I got to say.
On 12, we just need to add back in HVAC. Town Hall Garage, we had, unless there's some other reason that we're unaware of, we're planning to cover the remainder of that with free cash. It says free cash and/or borrowing, maybe he just wants to leave an opening for-
On 12?
Yeah, excuse me, 13.
13.
On 13?
Do you want to take out the borrowing, just leave free cash?
Well, just raise it, ask Paul why he put that in there.
Well, this is okay for the article, but when the motion is, you gotta, you gotta pick what you want at the motion. It's okay to have anything you want in there with the, with the article read.
Okay.
Well, when the motion is read, you have to say which one you're doing.
Our intent is to use free cash, not to borrow any.
You can leave it open for the time being.
And another reason bringing CPA back, because I guess whatever we would do, if we did anything with respect to the CPA tax, would affect Article 16 in their estimates of revenues.
Right.
On Article 19, I suggest we change the word management to sponsorship on the third to the last line. Actually, the management is going to be handled by Valley CDC, which is a nonprofit. They're really going to be handling the actual management of that activity.
Okay.
Haffield Housing Authority doesn't have the capacity there to handle the sales and those kinds of things, so Valley CDC is going to handle it, actually, but Haffield Housing Authority will serve as a sponsor for this activity, so if we just change that word management.
Okay, is-
The Senior Housing Buydown Assistance Program-
Is this the article, is this the Article 19 that, that's, we're talking about, they're talking about purchasing 55 and older housing over on Elm Street?
I guess that's where they're-
That's wild, that's what we-
I think that's what that one is about.
I don't know where they're going to purchase it, or-
All right, but again, I mean, there's, that's going to be a big to-do on town meeting floor. People are going to want to know why, and how are we going to, you know, we're going to have to pay taxes on it now, and, and all that other stuff.
We're losing tax base on it.
We'll lose tax on it because we own it.
Right, so, I mean, I agree, I agree with it.
All right, so, you know-
I mean, I agree with you with what you're saying.
Well, that's another conversation we could have with Bob and company.
Well, I'm not so sure it's a good idea, myself.
Well, that's, that's fine, folks will vote.
Yep.
And I thought we told them to put in the same, on Article 21, the same numbers? Didn't you tell them that, Ed, last time?
Should be the same numbers here. I did, I got to see Stanley to make sure that we're in line, we should be in line, I want to know what we used last year versus this year, but we should be plugging the same numbers in, year after year, it's been stayed, it's been staying the same.
Just for me, a sanity check, and I've just forgotten, on Article 23, have we worded that right? And again, I apologize.
Article 23, you said?
Yeah.
To lease a police cruiser, a DPW.
Remember, we're going to do a lease, but with the right language, you cover this once, and then the lease actually just, in the following years, goes into the operating budget.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure that this is the right language.
My suggestion would be to put each of these separately. What happens here is you risk if-
Losing all three.
Losing out all three of them. Okay? I mean, we're talking about a police cruiser, DPW, the track loader, and the council aging van. If you lump them, that's one vote, if you put them each separately, that way it's voted on each separately, because people may think that we need a police cruiser, but we don't need, you know, a loader, so on.
Probably need a loader more than a-
Yeah. Well, no, I don't know, it's been back in the garage again the other day. So anyway, my suggestion would be to put three articles in there for the leasing.
Okay, well, let's, we have a whole bunch of them to come back to, anyway, so we're coming back to this to look at whether we need separate articles, and my question is, do we have this worded properly?
Votes appropriate.
So that we do the one-
It should say a sum, in this here, it should say to a vote, to appropriate a sum of money, okay? In, in the articles-
Put in the money.
Put in a sum of money, okay, instead of putting the, the actual dollar figure in, because what happens if it changes at the time?
Yeah.
You know, you'll be amending it and so on, so you're better off to put a sum of money.
All right.
Instead of the-
And we still haven't closed on Articles 28 and 29, and that, excuse me, 28, rather. That's simply reading the Attorney General's comments from last year and addressing those, is probably working it.
Okay, and 29, you're talking about? Paul was supposed to-
Yeah, remember the, some of the articles having to do with the Fire Department?
28's with the Fire Department, 29 is the animal control-
We left off who was supposed to be doing something.
29, remember?
It wasn't clear, anyway.
Discuss that, yeah, it's got to be, if you're going to change it here, you've got to make sure that everything is in line here.
That's all I had on that one.
Could you tell me?
Well, I have one more.
Okay.
Hampshire Council of Governments, you all got this, I'm sure, I emailed you-
R.F.E.?
I emailed you some talking points. This is, Hampshire Council of Government has entered into the Hampshire Solar Program, entered into an agreement with, what's the name of the firm?
NextAmp.
NextAmp, yeah, thank you.
Well, this is the one for solar, and we can get a reduction in our-
And they're, they're asking that, that we put in an article for town meeting, which would read to the effect, "To see if the town would vote to authorize Board of Selectmen to enter into renewable energy purchase and/or net meeting credit, purchase agreements, including solar energy and related net metering credits for terms of more than three years, and to take all actions necessary to implement and administer such agreements or to take any other action relative there, too." And what it is, this, this arrangement, this company, the arrangement with NextAmp enables us to benefit from metering credits, from credits, so, for example, you get a certain amount of credits for use of solar or wind or, I suppose, and as a consequence of that, our cost of electricity would go down. However, these kinds of agreements are long-term agreements, and they're really looking for something like 20-year agreements, potentially, but, so they're asking, though, that if we would put an article on town floor to the effect that would enable us to enter such agreements for more than three years.
Yeah, I don't believe, I mean, we, right now, we can sign off on that without going to town meeting, just we can purchase that energy from them, no different than paying our electric bill and stuff.
I, I-
Okay, but when you-
I'll, we'll have, one of the things we can do is have Paul confirm, can we enter into agreement for more than three years, ourselves, without going to town meeting for authorization?
If you recall, when we were leasing the building, we could lease for 30 years, I think it falls into some category like that.
Well, you're right, they changed, but that's lease of a building, I don't know if this is, is different. Jeff Rogers is the one that sent these around to all the towns.
I believe this is at the conference, I got, I put her on to Paul to get all the information to Paul, so I just looked into that.
I just forward you the, some of the talking points on, on this whole program.
I don't know if we have to really go to town meeting.
Can I suggest this as a way ahead, that we draft it, put it in there?
Put a placeholder in there.
Put a placeholder for that language, and then when we review it with Town Council, he can-
Okay.
Say, no, you don't need this, you can do it yourself. Do you need that? Or do you have it? You? I'm sorry.
Just a point, Energy Committee's looking at meeting with Joff on that.
Okay.
To get more clarification, but it's sizable, 21% discount.
Well, that's-
Yeah, we can save quite a bit of money.
Imagine what your base rate is, so if you're paying lower in the winter, it's 21% off of that, if you're paying higher in the summer, 21%. It's based on a percentage rather than a set amount.
Yeah, it sounds like a very good deal.
Right.
Sounds like a very good deal.
So, yeah, it's, it's something that, there is some complications, just understand it all. He recommends that you don't go over eighty-
Chris, come up, come up here on the mic.
Oh. Joff recommends that you don't go over 85% of the entire, and try to get the school into, right now, we're using 1717 megawatts of electricity for the town, so we're talking big numbers here, discount.
Why, what, what's the 85%?
Because you're, you're basically blocking in, so the project, so you understand, the project would be tied into one of the towns, or if it was here, for instance, if there was a project here that NextAmp had, it would be tied directly to that. So, what, let's say, a project produces 3,000 megawatts a year, just to give you a number, but we only need 1717, okay? That's 100%, but we might have a, a warm summer, I mean, a cool summer, rather, where you don't need much air conditioning, so you don't want to get caught in buying a block. So, because it's only fair to them, because they're setting aside that amount out of there, so it's, instead of saying 1717, you'd say 15, or something like that. And then what happens is that we pay, just like we do now with the spot market deals, we pay the base rate, or the regular rate, and then if we get a discount, the COG sends us the rebate. But in this case, it would be actually a fixed percentage, so you're guaranteed whatever that is, up to the 85%. Or that block of 15, let's say, 1,500 megawatts for the year. So it's got, it's a lot going for this idea. Now, Whately just entered into a direct agreement with NextAmp on the new project that's going on up there, and they're doing it direct at a higher discount. Just, you know, things could happen between now and town meeting, that, let's say, the citizens thing occurs, citizens may turn around and say, well, we'll give you 25, or we'll give you 27.
We use a Phil leveraging?
Yeah, you know what I mean? Why not?
And I mean, we've got, what, 30 acres or something like that up on top of the mountain on the corner of Mountain Road and, or Mountain, yeah, Mountain Road and Lindsay Road, yeah.
Yeah, well, you've got, over by the West Street, well there, got a beautiful sight.
Yeah, but up on the mountain there, it's out of the way, it's, there's no houses around, there's nothing to bother anybody, it'd be a much more appropriate place to place it.
Well, the problem is, the further you are away from-
Distribution point.
From distribution point, the more you lose.
Yeah, but right at the, the distribution point would be right at the reservoir, because we've got three phases going right to the reservoir. So it's not only a matter of putting in-
Well, I've looked at that pit site you were talking about, it's awkward, it's very awkward.
Anyway, we're just, we're just talking about articles.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
But we'll put that placeholder in.
Placeholder for that.
Yep. I think that's about it, Jeff, isn't it?
We still got work to do.
Okay, wait on us, Article 24, 25? I talked to Phil about these three.
Oh, 24, 25, and 26?
Right. He said that Louise mentioned something that, to get these on for this year, is there a reason for that?
No, there was one of them for, this one here, number 26, oh, let's see, sorry, make sure it's not this. There was, there was one that Louise suggested placement here as opposed to next year on the capital again, this is still not firm, but she was looking at-
This one here?
Redoing our borrowing.
22C?
Was she trying to put it together as a bond or something?
No, 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 yeah, she's, she's looking, interest rates are at historic lows, 40-year lows, and so Town Treasurer has been looking at how we might repackage our debt to take advantage of that and lower the debt payments in the, in the years ahead. And one of the things she was suggesting is, and she served as an advisor on our Capital Planning Committee, bringing that one forward, at least initially to look at while she's looking at how she might restructure our debt with a, with a bond.
But you don't know what, you can't-
I've forgotten which one it was.
So I was talking to Phil about-
I think it's, I think it's 26.
Getting rid of-
I think it's number 26.
26?
The 250,000, which is the number that I'm going to-
Right, but I was talking to him about taking out what we can take out for this year.
I thought Phil says we can, with the rotating biological thing for the sewer, he said we could put that off.
Right, that and also-
The wastewater treatment?
Yeah.
Pump station?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't hear that.
And actually, he, he said the other one, too, but I, I, I mean, let's face it, we got to look for some cuts.
Oh, we will, we will.
You know, so, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up now.
No, we will.
Because, as Ed says, I pay taxes to everybody.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, there are certain things you need to take care of.
Oh, yeah, right.
Water, sewer, police fires.
Well, they haven't been taken care of since new, and, but if we can-
This third, we have two RBCs running.
We've got two running that are fairly old.
We're not going to debate each item right now, but we have two RBCs running at all, all the time. This is the original equipment, he's phased over a period of years here with the replacement of those RBCs, this is the last one. How long's the plant been in operation? 20, 30 years?
No, it's, yeah, at least 30 years.
You know, it's, it's that time.
The question, like, on, on the, where is it, the water, the mixer, $250,000 for the mixer, and that's for the, the water, the water department?
No, that's sewer.
No, that's sewer, that's sewer.
That's sewer, that one's sewer.
Oh, no, you're talking to water mix, the tank mixer?
The sewer, that's the sewer mixers and equipment.
I, I think that's the one that-
Where's the water tank?
The water tank is coming out of the tree, tree fund.
Yeah.
Which is-
The water mixer, this is up at the reservoir because of the scouring.
Right, but my, I guess my question on that is, and I don't remember how much the dollar figure was for that.
It's 100, I'll tell you, I'll tell you in a second.
Hundred and something thousand. I do know when you, when you have to go in and redo the inside of the tank with gunite and so on, I think the last time it cost us, I want to say around 12,000 or 15,000 dollars to do that. I mean, if you look at, he's trying to eliminate, and that's one thing I'd like to ask the question, he tries, trying to eliminate that, the chaping of the sides and so on, so we don't have that.
Right.
But if you spend 120,000 dollars, and if it only costs you, every 10 years, it costs you 10,000 dollars or 20,000, that's, that's kind of like spending money foolishly, isn't it?
I, I don't have the sheet right with me, I think it's closer to 60,000 dollars, and they're planning to use the sale of timber, a fund that's been sitting dormant for some years as a source of funds to pay them off.
I know, but my point being is, if you're trying to fix something within the tank, and the cost to maintain it over a period of years, okay, every, let's say, every five years, you've got to maintain it, it costs you 15,000 dollars, and if he's asking for 100 and something thousand dollars to put this thing in to alleviate that, you can get a lot of years out of it before you're up to that 100 and something thousand dollars. You see what I'm saying? One outweighs the other.
Yeah, but I mean, does the, is this protecting the steel? Or is it just protecting the, the gunite coating that's, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, what's happening is, the way I understand it, and what Phil said, is that when the ice builds up on the top, and then it drops down, it scrapes against the walls, and it takes that gunite and loosens it up. So you have to maintain it after a certain period of years. I'd like to see what that maintenance cost is versus what it would cost us to put this in. And is it really worth it, doing it? Or we just take and-
I think with an appropriation you had a year or two ago, they fixed the walls, but they didn't have enough money for this. Now they're coming back for the rest of that single project.
I know, this, this will eliminate the gunite problem. But what I'm saying is, if it only costs a little bit to fix it with the gunite every so many years,
I see.
And all of a sudden, you're spending 100 and something thousand this year, and maybe you're gonna have, in 10 years, you're gonna have to replace it.
I think for the pump, it was 60,000 or something like that.
60 or 61 or something like that.
I think that's what it was.
Okay.
And this tree fund has got, I forgot how many.
I just don't want to spend money that's, really, let's think this thing really through when everybody's talking about spending so much money here. Let's make sure that it's the best deal in the best interest of the town.
Well, be, be clear, this is our dream sheet. Now, we're, all this is going to get scoped when we start putting all the numbers, hard numbers to it.
Yeah. And as far as I'm concerned, it's crunch time again, and-
Yeah, it is.
And we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here.
On the budget, I don't know, did you all look over his spreadsheet? Again, this is-
I didn't look it over, no.
This is a work in progress also. He's covered down some of the things we've talked about, like the accountant's office. I wasn't clear about the numbers in the assessor staff. What that jump was. Winter roads, only a small delta, but there's a legal requirement. We need to keep spending as much as we spent last year for snow and ice.
The last year-
What are you on here, Jeff? What number?
Oh, well. I don't want to be talking to myself, if you've, if you've all looked at this, that's fine, but. On, for example, on winter roads, on line 40, 48, page two. It's just a small delta, but the law requires you to spend as much each year on snow and ice, and that permits you to do certain things. We always try to put the minimum in there. Town Hall renovation on the
Articles.
Next four. He, uh, he leaves that whole thing blank.
Hasn't gotten the final figures yet.
He hasn't changed anything since the last time we talked, at a meeting the other day.
He's made some changes, he's saying.
Well, because there's no- but he doesn't have, he probably doesn't have anything yet, so-
I think he said on that Town Hall renovation, he didn't have the final-
Okay.
Final figures in yet.
He's got compensated absences on the wrong line on the last page. A dollar figure goes on the- Never mind, yeah, the 350,000 dollars is not to come, it's stated at the end of this, it's in the last column.
Oh, yeah.
It's only Lakers. Alright, well, we need, we need Paul to be here to have an intelligent conversation on this. There, there's some other things, though. The assessors kicked in 41,000 from 206 to 208 overlay. You know, I don't see where we've got that nailed down. Town accountant identified what he termed as various tailings from a variety of accounts. And I'm not sure we show that anywhere as a potential source. So, his bottom line here of under being X thousand under levy limit is a little misleading. We haven't accounted for all the potential sources of revenue, and we haven't accounted for all the costs either.
Well, he isn't gonna be around.
He'll be tomorrow, isn't he?
Tomorrow, he's gonna be here.
He'll be here tomorrow night, right.
He'll be here tomorrow night, he'll be here Thursday, I think he's gone, Friday he'll be here. And then I think he's gone for a week.
Yeah, I think he's doing a surgery or something.
Yeah, maybe, well, supposed to be a week. So we can sit down with him tomorrow night.
We're meeting with Finance Committee, oh.
Well, he's gonna be here soon, I mean, but it is a scheduled meeting, so we can sit with him and go over that.
So is this the newest one that we have for the Finance Committee tomorrow night? This one here?
This is, that's it, right here.
Okay, that's it. Alright.
Which doesn't look much different than the other one, but there is a couple little changes in there. But I do know on that Town Hall, doesn't have that one set.
Okay. Goes to some old business, or talk more about this?
We can go over some old business.
I guess I probably should have mentioned that, it's an introductory comment. We've got a number of vacancies on various positions, committees, and boards. We have some terms of offices coming open. We encourage folks, anyone interested in those, and they're posted, John's got them posted on Channel 15, and are they on the website, Key? And they're on the website as well. We're trying to lock down this month, before the end of this month, on these appointments.
I know there's, School Committee's got one opening that nobody's running for. Redevelopment Authority, there's one opening that's, nobody's running for, and, and I think-
One or two, I thought it was two, isn't it? On redevelopment?
I think, I think when I saw it, I looked at the report the other day, it was one that I know of.
We had a, just a, some old business, we had a debrief from Mass Works. Victoria Maguire runs Mass Works concerning our water and sewer project. And proposed grant for a segment of the water and sewer project on Route 5. Gave us a variety of suggestions about how we might improve our submission. Things like getting a partner lined up, who essentially would say they'd build if, if this got built out. One of the key things, and a variety of others, I won't go through here, but one of, one of the key things they, Mass Works still had concern about was the price. And recall, in this segment, we were looking to them for about 1.9 million. And the town's kicking in that portion with a transmission line coming down. It's, the overall project would be, this segment of this project would be about 4.2 million. One of the things Mass Works kept reiterating is they have a hard time with that number of 1.9. And as being big for, for what they have available for grants, yet it's probably as small as we've been able to structure something that would support economic development and be a viable standalone project. So that's one of the big things, and I, I met up with Representative Kokot.
I, I'm hearing him.
He, he, we went through the debrief, he had attended the last one, he did not attend this one. And he took it on to, said, well, let me go see if I can find another way. So I don't know what the other way might be, but at least he was, he hadn't written this off, and he's still trying to be in there, being helpful.
Because the other way is, there's no way we're gonna drop back and make it smaller. But the other way that he has to look at it is that it's protecting our aquifer. Okay, that's the key here, protecting our aquifer, getting rid of the sewer, the septic systems over there, because that's right above our aquifers. And we have, every time turned around, there's a failed system, every year we have a number of failed systems over there. And, and that's, that's a key, those are key objects that we have to deal with. And I just don't, you know, our, our water is so valuable that I don't know if he can find another way that way, and that's around about it, you know, and-
No, all I wanted to do is say that he's aware of where we are, and-
Sure.
He's, he's committed to try and keep working with us.
It didn't sound as promising as this year as it did last year.
No, it didn't.
I mean, they're looking, they're looking for a business that'll give, you know, 30 employees or something like that.
Yeah.
But how much is it gonna cost us in emergency?
They're not looking at that, they're looking at housing.
That was, that was one of the things that kind of struck me, that this was supposed to be economic development, the type, type grant we've been seeking, but Victoria Maguire was talking about a variety of other things, like housing.
Right.
So, so we do, we mentioned, we've got this mixed-use development bylaw coming along here. She was talking about expedited permitting, so we were throwing something on, on that. A, a variety of other things, which you wouldn't think of directly as economic development.
Well, when I read his email, you know, he's looking for a specific, like I said, he's looking for a business that's willing to work with the town upon approval, and then they would give us approval.
Well, not necessarily.
Or possibly give us approval.
No.
But, you know, by the time it takes them to give us approval, the business can't wait anymore.
When she was talking about it last year, if we could float some money into the project-
Which we did.
Which we did, we figured we would have it, pretty much. And, and the way she explained it last year was, you'll have a lot better chance of seeing money. Well, guess what? It didn't go, so here we go.
Never, never a promise, we, we're, we're trying, anyway.
Did, uh-
Well, Chris-
Go ahead.
Just for Chris, I met up with Jim Berry at a, a D O E R at a session concerning taxing solar facilities this past week. Energy Committee was supposed to get with Jim some, two months back, or, when was he here? I forgot when. It's never happened, anyway, if, if you're not aware of it, let me have Paul.
Nope, we're not aware of it.
You're not aware, alright, well, okay. Would you ask Paul to get with the Energy Committee to remind them of the session that they were supposed to meet with Mr. Jim Berry? This goes back at least a couple of months.
I saw Jim Berry on Tuesday.
Yeah.
He didn't say a thing to me.
Really, bit my ear.
How about this license, do we have a date for this license?
That's all set.
For the one for the-
We have to sign it.
Just, we sign, we, we approved the publication.
Approved, we got it back, we just have to sign it.
Okay.
Alright, anybody else for this stuff?
I'm good. Anything else?
Nope.
No? Anything else for?
Nope.
I'm good.
I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session to conduct, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and the chair so declares. Second.
Okay, motion's been made, second.
Les Boil.
All in favor? Adamski, aye. Okay, we will not be returning to regular session. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.